Well, I'm going to come on. But there's.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a board again.
Any idea what that was about?
Okay. Because then, I think money to have the right to spend and we.
Yeah. So I just laid it right.
Thank you. You have a king up there. Pleasure to meet you. I have a good idea.
Then there's a change.
Okay, over this.
Yeah.
I got the joke. That's what I've been looking for. That'd be good. I didn't like. I know.
I don't have a period.
I, I hope we sit these down for the next three years. You could guess.
Yeah. All right, we'll call the Grand Forks County Commission today. Today is November. Seven. Twenty twenty-three. Four of the commissioners are present. And Kimberly Hagan is on Zoom. So we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody get a chance to, in the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? I'll move a real slow move. Commissioner Ruston, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Commissioner Peach, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Approval of the order of agenda. Any additions or directions or any of that others? Nothing? Do I have a motion to approve? Commissioner Ruston makes the approval to approve the order of agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Engen. All of the favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Approval of the consent agenda. Bills, employee status changes over time. Vaughn or check reissue. Does anybody wish to have anything pulled or discussed? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll approve.
Okay, Commissioner Peach makes a motion to approve. Do I have seconds? Commissioner Ruston, seconds. All those in favor of the motion signify by standing ayes. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. The IT director.
Where you speak.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're looking.
Oh, I'm working it just. All right.
Leslie, here, I got two right here.
I got ready. Getting back to, you know, the utilization. By Grand Sky. Oh, there. All right. Well, that's the one. Mr. Sawyer, are you on at all? Well, we'll come back to him like to show up. Eric Schneider.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ross, members of the commission. What I have today is a contract with the North Dakota Association of Counties traffic safety contract. What this actually is, to paraphrase all of the pages that you have, is the contract to pay for our Vision Zero Coordinator that is housed through our, in our county, in the sheriff's office that serves the northeast region of North Dakota. We're looking to have this contract renewed. It will run through next September, September 3, 2024. On the fifth page, I'm looking for a signature from the chair.
Okay. Is that a grant position or what is that or?
Yeah, so that it's, it's fully funded grant, hundred percent funded through the Association of Counties.
Okay.
I believe it was two years ago now. Then we got this position. Caitlin Atkinson is the one that's filling the position. She's been doing unbelievable things. She's got advertising now at all U N D athletics events out at the racetrack. She's all in all of the schools doing education and outreach. She's out, she's out at tailgating for the U N D N D S U football game and it's, it's working really well. So it's, it's it's good to have her in our office doing a lot of good, good stuff, so.
Okay, I'll move approval to allow the chair to sign.
Okay, Commissioner Ruston makes a motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Peach. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
I'm nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. West.
Okay. Good afternoon. Aaron Ross, members of the board. Something to run on by the board, it's some opinions and thoughts is DOT has application, application period opens for the new flexible transportation fund. This is a new program that is, led us this legislature this spring created. It's a grant program, reimbursement program that allocate money for rural projects, bridges, infrastructure. We do have plans or we're working on submitting two projects right now with permission of this board. But the two we're thinking of is one is Eagle Avenue, County Road 25, a joint application to Trail County. That we were gonna, we were gonna try and do earlier this year, but that fell through and so we'd like to apply for this program. And then the second one is to do some road improvements to right on the north west side of the city of Grand Forks that the up to the new kidney energy plant that's being proposed to improve some of those township roads for that. Now, one with, for retaining the energy, the city would like to lead that. As they're going to be added into the city and be part of the city, so they would like to be the lead on that. However, they're hoping that we can get support of the county and because there is a big part of the grant is the selection process and one of the things that they're looking for is projects that serve multiple agencies. So when they're checking that or looking at criteria, that's one of the things that's a benefit. So if they can have two local governments agreeing on a project that helps boost it. And well, just for the board's awareness, the criteria are support complete streets, multimodal transportation infrastructure, improvement of roadway restrictions, economic development, innovation, safety and financial commitment. So those are the seven criteria that they're going to score us on. The support complete streets, I think my opinion is the county's going to be in that category simply because complete streets means you know, pedestrian bikes, more so it's motorcyclists, transit and all ages and abilities as well when you're out in the rural area. We don't have too many sidewalks or bicycle lanes. You know, so we're not going to compete well there, but neither will other counties. Multimodal transit, well, bus, rail, waterways, air, transit. You know, I don't know how that should be going to work out, but for anybody, but you know, improvement of roadway restrictions, absolutely. Highway limitations, that's right in our alley. Economic development, you know, like leading up to taking the energy is certainly a big economic impact or sure to be piled by rentals. I think we would do well there. Innovation now. So there are some newer products and technologies that we could implement that we were planning on using on Eagle Avenue. Different geo grids or chemicals you can base table, they keep on said, we can use the shrink in the roads, things like that. And we were planning on using anyway. I think we compete well. Safety. I think we can keep these things there. The financial commitment, well, that that's where it gets a little interesting. So I'm, I'm, if I read between the lines from what I understand of all this, at least in an application for a project, and we say, hey, Graham, give us hundred percent of the money to do this project. How many guests were not going to score about? We go to them and say, hey, would you give us eighty percent? And the local government would kick in twenty percent. That's showing we have some commitment to it, you know, some standing game. I think we would score well. I think that's what they're getting at in that case or prior partnership agreements. The Eagle Avenue project. Trail County Board two weeks ago, they, their board approved and getting things split. They would ask for eighty percent of the project. The two counties would split twenty percent. So we would pay, Grand Forks County would pay ten, Trail pays ten. That's what they're proposing.
Is that County Road 25?
Correct.
Yes. And is that above those track?
Yes. Well, we did it all the way to 26.
Yeah.
Now all the way to the Red River. I think there's a mile or mile and a half left, but.
Okay.
That's okay. It'll be ground. If we could get to our County 26, that would make a nice payment.
Sure. How long is good for that be?
I believe it's six miles.
Six, yeah.
That one, I think we can check a lot of the boxes on this for a rural project. I think we can eat well that way. As far as on that. Would I need a motion from the board to work on that application as far as, because it would, if we get the grant, it would commit ten percent of our local funds to that project.
Any idea what that would be?
Any of all three hundred dollars. Two to four hundred.
Budget already or extra?
It's not currently budgeted right now. However, we do have some remaining period of money left that we can utilize. If I had a, a year or so of planning, we could work it in. If they give us the money and we go this year, we could do it with our period of money. If it waits couple of years before we can actually do the project, then we absolutely budget it. But I think we could work it in.
Okay.
That would certainly be.
Okay, oh yeah.
On the epitome, the, the road that leads to the epitome areas. Who all would that, that road finish? What's there now? It's a narrow township road and not too great a road. What is it?
It's Fifty-Fifth Street, which we call it the old burly Toyota road. I mean, you know where that was? Yeah, it's a average township road.
It's cheaper to be to serve that area.
Oh, I need to pay. So a major operating. I don't have their estimate yet and I haven't heard from them if they're asking for a hundred percent of the project. I don't.
It will be.
I have a seat, excuse me. They were going to ask for a portion of the project.
Nice.
Yeah. And I can get more information and come back. Applications due at the end of the year. I could certainly have more information at next meeting.
Hey.
Mr. Chair, one of the things when you mentioned that, that second project would be a part of, of the county that would then become a city street or a part of the city. It, I thought about public transportation. Because if there are employment opportunities along that stretch, that may be a transportation, not particularly multimodal. But that may be a transportation area to consider if city transit was willing to go there to drop people off for employment and pick them up if they had such a route. That may be something to consider to check another box.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it becomes a city street, so it should be an opportunity that they're going to be willing to let public transit do some pick up and drop off, add some employment areas or between vice versa. That's something to consider.
Certainly good tidbit to throw in the application.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. My understanding that the city's not asking for any financial commitment from the county on that project. Even on the grant.
Okay.
But yeah, I can clarify that for sure.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
One thing both or any application should have is letters of support. Or, or those two projects would, if I brought something back at the next meeting for consideration.
Absolutely.
That'd be something to consider.
Yep.
And hopefully coming from the city and from economic to the the bridge.
The other thing with this grant is I, I want to throw in some of our bridges off the county. Take some of it and, and throw them in and see what happens. Worst case, they say no. Other than that, if, if there's any questions or if the board has any any other projects they would like to consider, please let me know.
Is there a concern that the overloading the application of the projects would diminish our opportunity of getting one or two?
I don't know. There is no maximum number of applications to be a jurisdiction can submit.
So I'd like to hear eating, not greedy.
That's a great question. I don't know. Just for the thought. Yeah. Thank you. I, I would like to submit various types of projects maybe because sometimes you don't know what the selection committee is really looking for. And when they get and when they start thinking about how they're going to disperse forty million dollars in the state. Well, maybe they might. You know. It's a little philosophical, but maybe they want to have a variety of projects. Maybe they want to have a variety of projects spread out geographically throughout the state that they might say, oh, yeah, you know, we don't have one in Grand Forks, but we only have this small pot. No, we could do that project. I don't know, you know, if we don't get any of the bigger ones. It's hard to say. The, the rules on the grant are very vague. They don't have minimum or maximum limits. They have a selection committee that's picked, that's going to make the recommendation. Then the DOT director is going to make a final decision. Like the opinion, energy, energy project is a great example. I mean, to upgrade all those roads that beat up to this huge dollar and all. They would, I don't think they would ever give all the money for it. And last time I talked to the city representative, he's saying that we're just going to ask for a portion of it. And hopefully just get a portion of it. Hopefully get twenty percent or thirty percent paid or something like that. I forget the number, but you know, even maybe a maintenance overlay somewhere or something. Get a variety of stuff in there and never know.
Throwing in a bike path wouldn't be a bad idea either. If you're looking at something that's going to become a city street. It seems like our younger population tends to use bikes or more electric bikes, whatever they are now, to get to work, to save money on, on ergonomic environment issues. So that'd be something to, to pitch with the city too. Again, they're becoming city streets. Give them an opportunity to get to work using a bicycle or an e-bicycle instead of worrying about where parking is going to happen on a lot as well as saving on the apartment.
Do you say specifically bike consideration for the penny project?
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah.
I thought maybe you were going on a rural angle.
No, no, well, yeah. That becomes an issue with the, the way the streets are designed, but it certainly would make sense to try to encourage people to use something more some other type of modal surface penalized getting to work.
A good thing about this program is it's written in I don't know, it's administrative code or century code, but it's written in the law that every two years they're going to solicit projects. The DOT got approved for two more F T Es to, to run this program specifically. So it's it's here to stay amongst headless state legislature takes away, but it's here. It looks like it's here to stay for a long time. And so this first round will probably learn a lot and see what they're looking for and then in two years we'll get another shot at it again and see where it goes, but.
Would that, would that include lighting also all the way out?
Pretty penny?
Yeah. I mean, street lights.
Yeah.
It'll be essential, really.
I don't know.
And maybe the city would do it.
It'd have to be the city. Yeah, it would be soon.
So, Mr. Chair, at this point, are you looking for a motion to move forward on these projects or a signature from the chair?
Well, I don't have anything for a signature yet.
So a motion to move forward?
That would be nice for, I can come back with a little, I eventually I'd like signature on a letter of recommendation for the projects we get out for a better let us part in here. I'd like to have that well before the end of the year course, but okay, I did, or, or maybe just public I asked for a motion for just the generalization of the Eagle Avenue, the eighty twenty split. So we know that we're committed to that. We're okay with our ten percent.
I would be willing to support that motion.
Okay, you have a second?
Yeah.
Second, my Commissioner Ruston. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you. About learning that, I'll plan on reporting back next meeting.
Yes, okay.
And our gravel road drop. Corum Argus is destroying them.
Yes.
It is what it is. We're dealing with it. Weather saints. If the forecast looks great, when we dry, fifty and sunny next week. Well, that would be great. Um. But yeah, that was miserable. Just one other little tidbit here that is on bridges. An eighty-five bridge is now on my portal list, however, and eleven were added this year. But extremely good news, we have thirty-six. Well, actually that list could be down to forty-nine. We have thirty-six in twenty twenty-three that were either replaced, rehabbed, or we have a definitive plan in place that they will be fixed up. Thirty-six in one year. That's huge. We believe we've ever had that.
Yeah, this work.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Combination of, well, like their, our box over replacements. Our crews rehabbing and then the grounds we've gotten from the state that are coming in construction next year, I mean, what about?
Not far from fifty percent. If that's part of that eighty-five numbers.
True.
You know, forty-two, it'd be forty-two and a half.
There's others that have.
So I mean, it's, it's an interesting number to deal with because we do have a lot of bridges that are in poor condition, but they're being addressed in a fairly quick manner. So that's, I think that number is great. Wonderful, thank you.
Welcome, Senator.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. West.
Thank you.
I see Mr. Sawyer is on now. Mr. Sawyer, your floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Chairman Ross, and thank you, members of the commission. I apologize for being late. I thought this started at four thirty, so you're willing to accommodate me now. I appreciate it. Back in the legislative session earlier this year, the legislature appropriated ten million dollars for use at Grand Sky for infrastructure along the same lines that we've been using state grant funds for the last ten years now. And I am requesting four hundred nine thousand twenty dollars and forty-five cents from that ten million dollar pool to do some reliability studies and engineering studies on our beyond line of sight system. Currently, our system is a string of single points of failure. And we need a reliability, maintainability and usability study to identify those areas that we can start to make other investments on for redundant equipment, redundant communication lines, things like that. When we installed the current system, the commission approved that, that approved the Talis team, which is also building the Vanta system across the state. So that we could get some synergy from that and because they were one of the only providers in the country. And as a result of that effort, Talis is the only company that can do this engineering study because of the intellectual property associated with the workings of the system. So respectfully, I'm requesting that we get four hundred nine thousand dollars and four hundred nine thousand twenty dollars and forty-five cents approved for this reliability, maintainability and availability study. The study price itself is three hundred seventy-one thousand and change, and I also baked in a seventy, thirty-seven thousand dollar contingency because inevitably we always find some part that, you know, it's like rebuilding a car. There's always a part left over. And so when we do the study, we need to make sure that we examine all those features and whether or not every part in the system is crucial to the functionality of the system. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, any commissions? I'll move approval. I think it's, well, it's needed and it's been funded, so.
Okay. Second by.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Peach. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you all very much.
Unanimously, right?
Yep.
Yep. It's great. Commissioner Hagan, you voted yes, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. State's turning.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I have a few items for the board's consideration today. The first item on the agenda is regarding the opioid litigation. I was contacted by our council for the, the opioid litigation. The multi-district litigation team has identified some additional defendants to add to the case. There was a trial in the M D L which found Walmart liable despite having a market share under two percent. And so the plaintiff's counsel is looking to add a number of other defendants that's market share is two percent or greater, since they were found liable for that amount. Our counsel has identified at least nine defendants that specifically had two percent or greater market share in Grand Forks County. They would like to add to the litigation. I had shared with them that this is a decision for the board. They are recommending that we do consider amending to add those defendants. And, and I would agree with that recommendation.
Any questions?
Questions?
More of it. The tailors?
So the, the nine that they have identified at this time is Mylan Inc., Haikama Pharmaceuticals USA Inc., Hamil, Sandos Inc., Invador Inc., Apotex, Dakota Drug, Thir- Thirfee White and Associated pharmacies.
What, what's the theory against pharmacists as opposed to the people prescribing all this stuff?
So they've taken a multiple approaches to this litigation. They went after the manufacturers, the distributors. And now they're kind of from the sounds that working their way down the food chain and you can adding the pharmacies that are responsible for prescribing remains drugs in the communities across the nation where the opioid litigation is going on.
I'm all the table of this litigation, but I think Travis speaks about. But I do have a little bit of trouble with people who are just filling prescriptions and they aren't the one pushing the drug. They're selling it. That's, that brings strict liability on a regional or my. I'm not sure I agree with it, but I won't. But again, adding them, I think if you guys think that's appropriate, but it just seems a little peculiar to me.
Any other discussion? Anybody? He just illustrated exactly where my brain that seemed odd to me as well. I too want to try to obstruct anything, but it does seem odd.
It does.
Well, it might say doctors.
I don't recall when strict liability and tort was coming in. But you don't go now, but. I recall when strict liability in court was coming in, but it was going out, but uh the issue was what happens with somebody who gets a bad can of something from a grocery store in the town in North Dakota, well, they didn't sell it, they didn't package it, so on and so on. But there were people trying to say that anyone in the retail chain should have strict liability for that. Well, I see these twitchy whites and those types of people, I don't know if there's other companies you mentioned, but if they aren't doing something particular to push particular drugs, now they'll have to let it shake out, but it just seems peculiar to me that they have been reaching down to the essentially retail level. Doctors. Uh sure, they're prescribing this stuff, but pharmacists are really filling prescriptions, so. Oh, I have a beach.
Um I do agree with your philosophy somewhat, but I guess my only other concern would be when the doctor does make a prescription. Um I'll use an example, my son got injured ten years ago um in a motorcycle racing accident. He almost lost his pinky. The doctor in the ER that time, they prescribed oxycodone for my son, gave him eighty-five pills. Eighty-five. He came home and I wasn't at the the accident, and immediately those pills went with me to a local clinic. And part of the issue is fine, okay, so the doctor prescribed eighty-five pills, but the pharmacy filled it. My son was seventeen years old at the time, and he did not have an adult with him on our insurance, he called, got our insurance number, but that became a concern not only of the physician who prescribed it, but also a concern of the pharmacy who gave it to him. And granted, it's a small percentage, but um painkillers are are sometimes too easy to get maybe through the doctor and then also through the pharmacy, do they have to fill anything out? Do they talk to them about, you know, this can be an addictive type of drug, whether it's your knee surgery, your ankle, whatever the case may be? I don't know, but I would hope that the pharmaceutical companies would take it upon themselves to try to educate the the people coming in to get the prescription filled so that they know this could be addictive, and it could be something for a major painkiller, which oftentimes they give after some type of surgery. But um I guess I would, I would um make a motion to include uh those nine additional um those nine additional parties to this lawsuit.
Great.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
If I could clarify, they've identified nine in our county that have two percent or greater right now, but potentially there could be more than nine. So if there is a motion, I would maybe recommend that it be a little more broad to include not specifically only nine in case they identify another, um but just um allowing for the amendment to include um defendants um in this category of a two percent market share.
Well, get it.
Or greater within Grand Forks County, and I would be fine with that.
Okay, do I have a second for that motion? Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll I'll second to.
Okay.
Can we just, is there gonna be a little more discussion now? More uh more sulfur daily, I guess. Oh, so. I can't get, I can't get away from what what Dave was saying in my mind, um I know Cindy made some great points, but I guess if they're selling a legal product, you can't go in and buy it. You you I can't go to an hospital or whatever, the CVS now to go buy Oxycodone, so that directive has to come from a physician. And so it's almost like this, it seems to me that we're punishing the wrong entities, and I can't get away with it. I'll still say, I'll still vote for it, but I'm struggling with this one. Okay.
Can I add just one thing? Sorry, it's hard to speak in Zoom, um. I uh have a personal story with these opioid medications, and I know that um it's a big deal to a lot of people, and it's a very passionate discussion, but the pharmacist also can say no, like I know that the doctors are the ones that are supposed to visit with the patients, but the pharmacists have availability and the know-how to say no to patients. And they, you know, they don't have to fill them, even though the doctor gave the prescription to the patient. So, and we saw it with, you know, during COVID, they didn't fill certain medications because they felt a certain way. They didn't have to fill, they can go and look and see how many times this person's been prescribed medication, or you know, this is above the recommended limit for a minor, in Cindy's case, you know, this is you know, not trying to punish a pharmacist, but they do have the opportunity to say no to somebody, so.
Great point.
Okay, one one last point in that, yes, the
the pharmacist that gives Oxycodone to a seventeen-year-old is that's a different, that's a bad story, that's ridiculous. But well, without the, it it, there's got to be a legal duty that the that they're violating, and if if they're included in the lawsuit and that kind of duty is established, then fine, then. But it's just, I look at the local drug stores that I know, or the person behind the counter trusts the doctor, like everybody fucks the doctors, so I suspect that may be a a difficult thing for them to do, to to establish this kind of liability, but you know, it doesn't hurt them, and it just costs companies to defend these things, and as they're if they have a duty and they violated it, fine, we get them. But otherwise, I I'm not sure they're in the chain, but we'll see.
Mister Chair, just one additional comment related to what Commissioner Hagan was discussing. I I know from our offices with with law enforcement, it's not unusual for a pharmacist to check what's called the PBMP, um which is the kind of database of somebody's prescription to to see if that individual perhaps is doctor shopping and seeking controlled because there's been members of different doctors, and they do have availability, just as Commissioner Hagan indicated, to refuse to fill a prescription if they feel that that is something that has been occurring, which I think um is somewhat prevalent in these opioid situations where there were people that became addicted and were getting multiple prescriptions and multiple.
Great. All right, any other comments? Okay, I've got a uh motion, and I have a second. Um we're gonna do roll call vote, um. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh opposed, same sign, motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. The next item I have is um included in the packet is a proposed perp beneficiary agreement. This is for the allocation to CDIC that was moved in the twenty twenty-four budget, so this is essentially just memorializing what you already uh agreed to provide to CDIC and open the Pentagon.
Do you need a motion for chair to sign or something?
That's great, thank you.
Okay, okay, Mr. Hagan made a motion, do I have a second, Commissioner Ruston? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried unanimously.
Then the last item that I have um is regarding the lease agreement with Northeast Human Service Center for the office space here in the county office building. Um Mister Ford asked me to raise this, however, um the the amendments were not included in the packet, um but I can summarize for the group, and if you wanted additional time to review, you certainly could table this for next week. Um there are two separate amendments um to two different lease agreements. Um and um essentially the changes is just an amendment to the insurance requirement. It's my understanding that Mister Ford has conferred with L Insurance in Najerf and confirmed that our insurance meets the updated requirement that the state is asking for. So if the board is comfortable, I would ask for a motion for the chair's signature on both of these.
Okay, any questions? Do I have a motion? Commissioner Ruston makes the motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Peach is a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Thank you, I have nothing further to report.
Right. Committee reports. Commissioner Ruston, nothing, I must have got the oils in the Rocky Mountain. Commissioner Hagan, do you have anything?
Uh, nothing new for the board today, thank you.
Commissioner Peach?
Um just to let you know that the airport is already is meeting with employees, it's coming Thursday for a couple of hours in the morning. Um it's going to be talking about uh employee benefits, employees uh salaries, just reviewing um internally based information at the airport.
Mister Hagan? I've had several meetings in the last couple of weeks by Zoom, or the person is preparing for the community visits of Pentagon next week. We're looking through the city and Cali and other civic leaders and consultants and so on.
Okay, that's all cute.
Um the only thing I have to report is Tuesdays, we have our construction meeting out at the uh Grand Forks County Correctional Center, uh going over any uh amendments or where they're at with the construction and and what's going up and when, and so we had uh one this morning, and the walls are going up, back door walls are almost complete. So things are moving right along. All right. Any unfinished new business? Uh clearly. Yeah, she does have.
Yeah.
Um Mister Chairman, members of the commission, uh we have that, the twenty twenty-three county tour on November fourteenth at two fifty, so just a reminder to attend.
Okay, thank you. All right. The respondents.
Uh Mister Chairman, uh member of the commission, we have a thank you from the Greater Grand Forks Community Service and Restitution um for the funding names. The last thing is the North Dakota's important notice stating that they continue with Judge Shift number two.
Okay. Good.
I had one thing.
Yes.
Anecdotally, I wanted to uh give kind of a poodles or shout out to the HR department, Roberta, Rachel, with some work they did for my ex-wife over the course of last week. My ex-wife said it was smooth as silk and was very impressed, so I wanted to make sure that that was set out loud.
Okay.
Very nice.
Yeah. All right. Did you guys have anything? Okay, uh, Commissioner Hagan.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn, second, give it to Ruston, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.